I call this meeting to order. Please rise. Individuals.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All voters please.
Mayor, come in.
Here.
Mr. Kapatis.
Here.
Mrs. Passio.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Root.
Here.
Mr. Bayshore.
Here.
And Mr. Roy.
Here.
Of its notice, this meeting is subject to the Oakland Public Meeting Act as been given by the clerk in the following manner. One, posted on the bulletin board in the borough clerk's office on January 7, 2013. Two, email to direct inspecting and courier post on January 7, 2013. May I have an approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a.
A second.
Five twenty-eight. Well, let's make a motion for a five twenty-eight.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
The right staff of information, mayor.
We have the report of the construction official for the month of June. A total of $7,554 was collected in various permits fees and COEs. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. We have the report of the police chief for the month of June. A total of $152.20 was collected for various accident discovery solicitor reports and requests of fire on permits. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. We have the report of the municipal court for the month of April. A total of $18,209.13 was collected in fines. And for the month of May, a total of $12,651.26 was collected. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. We have the report of the borough clerk for the month of June. A total of $11,130 was collected for various permits licenses, including the pack licenses. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. We have the report of the registrar of vital statistics for the month of June. A total of $3,586 was collected for various death copies, marriage copies, and marriage licenses. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. I have the report of the fire marshal for the month of June. A total of $2,392 was collected in fees. Eighty-four inspections were completed, 137 total incidents, four permits issued, one type one and one type two, I've no idea what they are. And in emergency medical services billing, a total of $16,389.75 was collected. All monies were turned over to the treasurer. We have the report of the tax collector for the month of June. A total of $148,665.18 was collected in taxes and $13,542 in silver bills. That goes to the reports. I had an email from Cole Daley today that were approximately six hundred and twenty, six hundred and sixty total incidents that they were called for during the month. Police department, that's all.
May I make a motion on that?
I make a motion.
That can be made.
I'll second.
All voters in favor? Aye.
We have several public hearings. First public hearing is ordinance 13-09. This is an ordinance amending search provisions of the code of the Borough of Rarine. This sets the date for the examining application. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only should step up to the microphone and give their name and address.
I see no one. I make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
I'll second.
I make a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
That's six out. The next is ordinance 13-10. This is an ordinance amending the Borough of Rarine Code, Chapter 50, Article 1, Section 2, that's one. This is the composition of the police department. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only may step up to the microphone and state their name and address.
I see no one to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
I'll second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
I make a motion to adopt.
You second?
I'll second.
All vote.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
That's six out. Ordinance 13-11 is an ordinance authorizing payment of appropriate compensation for position of the community's board here. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only may step up to the microphone and state their name and address.
I see no one to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
A second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
I make a motion.
I second.
All vote.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
That's six out. Ordinance 13-12 is an ordinance authorizing payment of appropriate compensation for the position of municipal line school owner. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only may step up to the microphone and state their name and address.
I see no one to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
I'll second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The right staff. All vote.
I'll make a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
I'll second.
All vote.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
That's six out. Ordinance 13-13 is an ordinance establishing the position of the county clerk of the Borough of Rarine. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only may step up to the microphone and state their name and address.
I see no one to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
I'll second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
I'll second.
I second.
All vote.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
That's six out. Ordinance 13-14. This is an ordinance regulating the staffers and employees of the Borough of Rarine for the year 2013. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only may step up to the microphone and state their name and address.
Seeing no one to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
I'll second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
I make a motion.
I'll second. Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Kapatis.
Yes.
Six out.
Under this resolution, ordinance be adopted. May I report? I ask you.
Yes, thank you. We have several resolutions on them tonight. I just wanted to just go over them and if there's any questions for them. Basically, we had the DMV contract. I don't have an opportunity to review that. I believe the solicitors said that it's okay for us to approve it and allow the mayor to sign it. There's also a resolution that allows the court clerk to be the only person needed to sign the bail checks and the other checkbook. I think this is a positive thing to allow courts to move a little smoother. We have an ordinance that this was tabled from the previous meeting. It was a salary ordinance, or excuse me, resolution for the non-contractual statutory employee. This would be the 2% raise on the assessor, the clerk, the CFO, and the tax clerk. We have a shared service agreement this evening with Bellmore and Bellie Field. This authorizes again to sign cadence for the picking up of our trash. This agreement will start August. Director Bellmore did that detail. And then we have also a shared service with the Borough of Barrington for the deputy registrar for the vital statistics. This is a short-term agreement with extension to allow our current clerk to, when she takes vacation, sick days, they advance and they cover for us. And other than that, I'll let the Mr. White report anything more.
Health and education and work.
I have nothing going to report this month, but I can certainly have it before July. See you next month.
How can I say, Chief? I want to know.
Thank you, Mayor. I have rental license 13-09, Oakland Cooper's Athletic Association came, basket auction at Philly Diner, 7/12/13. All paid work is in order. I have another bingo license, 13-04, Fall Six ETO and Alumni Association at Holy Child Parish, August 24th to 13th of 2013. All paid work is in order, and I would like to make a motion to approve these two rental licenses.
I second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
The right staff.
And I would like to continue. There is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a police vehicle by Winter Ford under this safety contract. It's a Dodge Charger, fully equipped, and Captain Daley promised me that it will be in service by mid-July, so I'm very excited about that. So this has been something that we've been wanting to do since the first of the year, but money just wasn't available until we looked at the budget and came out with some money. So we're very happy to be able to do that for our police. They're hardworking people. National Night Out is August 6. Please mark your calendars because this is a great family night. There will be free food, pony rides, gifts. It's at the Harry Williams Building parking lot. It starts as soon as 6 o'clock, maybe a little bit before, but come for the evening. It's going to be a great night. This director attended the annual end of the year meeting with the crossing guards. And on behalf of the town and mayor and council, I thank them for their dedication and commitment to the safety of the children in this town. These people are out there every day, morning, afternoon, watching our children cross. It is the safety of the children that matters more than anything to them, and I thank them for their dedication. And with our fire department, we have a very active fire department, as I've told you in the past months. The emergency medical service had 96 calls in June. If you average it out, it's three calls a day, but of course, some days there are one or two, and other days there are five or six. They collected in fees just for the month of June, $16,389.75. The fire department had 41 fire calls in June. And year-to-date, the fire and EMS fees collected are $168,112.15. Quite amazing, really, for what these men do. Volunteers, all of them, are just to be commended for their service to this community. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. Public events.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll start off with engineering. Our public bathrooms at Green Acres is still under construction. Roof was put on last week. Completion should be hopefully in a few weeks. I'm not sure of the exact date. There was a pre-construction meeting today in regards to Reed and Orchard Avenues. The start is by the middle of next week. They will begin on Reed Avenue first, from Broadway to the end of Reed, and then upon completion, they will move on to Orchard Avenue. Door hangers will be left with the doors of residents informing them of this construction. Any other engineering information will be given by our engineer, Mark, at the time of this report. On Saturday, June 15, I attended the senior meeting. The seniors had their annual picnic on June 26 at Washington Towne to Lake Fork. Refreshments were provided by Athenee, so a very special thank you to them. Public events. We have our Fourth of July parade coming up. The bicycle parade will be at 9:00 a.m. at the Harry Williams Building, and the Rotary Club will be sponsoring that. They will be giving out the gifts and thank them. Then at 9:20, we will move on to the baby parade. Registration will be before the baby parade begins, so come early to register your children. And the Women's Club, Rarine, will be sponsoring that. You must live in Rarine and no older than five years old. Free water ice for all the children courtesy of Anthony's. And the main parade begins at 1:00 at Black Horse Pike in Clumsburg Road. We have some great participants, so come out and enjoy the parade. Following the parade, courtesy of the DFW and Public Defense Committee, we will go back to the DFW for free hot dogs and refreshments. Fourth of July, booklets can be picked up at some of our businesses along the bike and also in the lobby of our municipal building. They will be given out on the day of the parade. Booklets can stay in the municipal directory, the line of the parade, and also directory of our businesses in town. So it's something that our residents, I hope, will keep and use for reference. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The summer recreation program began Monday, July 1. Last camp, we had 87 kids and still grown. People are still signing up, and if anybody still wants to sign up, they're more than welcome to. The summer rec program is in Monday to Friday, running the entire month of July and half the month of August, almost half the month of August. There's athletics, arts, crafts, little science, swimming in our local hotel, the Rarine Inn Suites. I would like to thank Badlish Hotel, the owner, who generously dominates the pool to us every year. And it's two days already, and it seems to be running really smooth. We have some new people in there, and kids seem to like it, so happy about that. The Borough also partnered up, continuing partnership with the school district, Rarine Rotary Club, to provide the free music lessons for any child who is a member of the summer rec program. This program is the Jonathan Interlante Memorial Summer Music Camp, and it's paid entirely by the Rotary Club in memory of Jonathan Interlante. Park and Recreation is teaming up with Barrington for the Fourth of July celebrations. It will be on the Fourth at dusk. The fireworks will be going off at the Woodland Elementary School. Sorry.
Tomorrow.
Oh, it's on the third.
Tomorrow.
I said the Fourth. For the Fourth. On the Third. Sorry. Tomorrow, on the Third, for the Fourth.
On the Third.
On the Third for the Fourth. At the Woodland Elementary School, you can pretty much see them all, if you know where the Woodland Elementary School is. Anywhere around there is a good place to park and just look at the fireworks. Girl softball had a very successful tournament last week. They were very thankful for the work that we did as a town to get the fields ready to help them out. And the Rarine baseball is in their tournaments that are going on right now. The 12-year-olds are done. They gave a valid effort, but they're done now. The 10-year-olds are still in and waiting on dry weather. So as soon as... This is the longest any Rarine team has been in it, but I would say a week of it has been rained away, so take it for what it is. And that's my report, Matt.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay. Preparing for the Fourth of July parade. I'm going to overlap a lot here, so we are going to plan on placing recycle cans along the Black Horse Pike to try to help aid recycling, B, just with the cleanup in general. The public works will be cleaning up afterwards, running the streets, sweep up and down the bike to pick up any garbage that's left. We did purchase new cans for the RY with lint that actually have just the hole for recycling so that they're not being used as trash cans. They seem to be successful. I'm thinking that they turned out to be a good investment. Curb painting is scheduled to happen along Sabley Avenue. Barrington has offered the use of their curb line painter for us to use, as well as one of their public works employees to help out. The cost to the borough is only going to be the cost of the paint. Automatic hand dryers are scheduled to be installed at Harry Williams. I was hoping they were in the end before summer rec, but they are not in yet. We have all the wiring in place, but we're not ready for it yet, so. We've had a lot of resident input on potholes and road issues. They are being addressed. If the weather would cooperate slightly and our tamper would not continue to be broken, we would actually get probably more of them done. We've also had input from the residents on three easements that are in the town. One's been completely addressed. It has a little bit more work to be done, so I shouldn't say completely. And there are two more that need to be assessed a little bit more to figure out what the best course of action is for them. Grass cutting is continuing overall. The yard grease ordinance has been well received. If there are any residents that need cans, again, I say please don't hesitate to contact Public Works or me. You can contact Public Works at 931-0646, and they'll be happy to drop a can off at your house. The bushes along the back of the Borough Hall, along the defense line, were all pulled out, as well as Borough Hall's power wash. You can tell it's all ring, but it does look a lot better. We're working on the area. I'm working with Mike for the area down at Lakeview that used to be the playground. We are turning it into a dog park. Just a temporary. It's only a small start, but it's going to be something that we're looking forward to doing, making better use of that space. It just needs to be tweaked a little bit. Yes, there's going to be dump gates, dump gates at the front, as well as a holding area with gates in back so that no dog can just run out. The gates will be self-closing, and I just have to get that implemented. As far as recycling goes, for the first, well, it runs behind, so up until May, we've recycled, as a borough, 315.07 tons. That's $5,745 that have come into the borough for recycling. So it does pay in the long run. And the street sweeper, I get a lot of feedback that the street sweeper is not seen and it is not out and about. So I'm happy to report that as of this point in 2012, 239 miles have been logged on the street sweeper. As of this point in 2013, 470 have been logged on the street sweeper. So it is out. It's just a little difficult to hit every street, and again, if we cooperate, we would be better off. Other than that, I would...
The trash, what kind of?
I really don't have a lot of detail. We're kind of still figuring out the best way to address it to the residents.
Should we make it public at this point that this is a...
I mean, it's going to happen. We want to make sure that the residents are aware of what the savings is going to come back onto the borough, and I don't think we quite tweaked all the... I haven't, at least I...
There won't be a letter that's going to be sent out to us.
Yes, there's going to be a letter sent out to everybody that it's been in effect because it's going to be a date change with pickup, so I don't have all the ducks in line yet, so I apologize.
We'll pass the resolution.
Yeah. That's it. Other than that, progress.
Richard.
I'm going to run my report of focus, and I will go over a couple items. We have the police vehicle, which I perfectly already whatever it said now tonight. We have three severance resolutions, which when they come up, we just will read those for retiring employees. We have, we talked about it and said that it will be on for tonight. We have the purchase of the two generators for the pumping stations and also temporary recuperation. There was two or three items that I needed to specifically do. We needed to put the Sanway's line in for recreation, and we needed to add the line updated for Fourth of July. So I basically just went over it this afternoon and updated it just the biggest... I guess we're probably about 65% for temporary, but so we're still not up to full. And that will be, once we're adopted, that's sort of private for full. Other than that, everything. More of this been covered, or was it in my...
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. No formal report. I don't know where we are with this proposed memorandum of agreement between the police department and the Business Watch International. We discussed it at the caucus meeting, two coffices ago. An individual from the police department has kind of been taking the point, and I have been communicating back and forth and sending you the draft, as proposed, of course, by the other people. I wrote back and told all of my concerns, and all of my concerns were addressed except one. And the indication was that the company wasn't willing to change that particular provision because, quote, "that would mean they would have to get lawyers in every state."
Is that because they've referenced Florida, is that what you're...
Well, yeah, that's exactly why. I thought that was pretty interesting because, and then he proceeded to tell me that they're in this town and that town and the other town, all in New Jersey, so I found it as onerous on them. And it only comes into play if there's a breach of the agreement. So difficulty is if there's a breach of the agreement, and we have to sue them, we have to do it in Broward County, Florida. And if they could sue us, they get to sue us in Broward County, Florida, where they are, and we get to go hire a lawyer down there and have somebody, or send a number of people up the schlep down to be witnesses. So I still find that to be potentially onerous on the Borough, and the rest of the agreement is perfectly fine. That's still a big concern of mine. Other than that, everything's good.
Thank you, Matt, Mayor. We've had a very busy month, and I'll go over the statute report that I handed out prior to last week's caucus meeting, and hopefully not duplicate anything that Council and Pass was only talking about tonight. The DOT fiscal year 2013 project for the reconstruction of Reed Avenue, our field survey work's complete, and we're going to start the base plans and also the design. We'll probably have some layout on soil flooring just so we can see how much asphalt's out there, so we don't want any major change orders along that. The RYA short-term improvements, same status. We have our field survey work complete, and we're starting the design plans for that. The long-term improvements, we have preliminary layout draft, and I want to get together with the director and go over some of those ideas and what we find that will go further before we take that project. The Borough Hall ADA access, our architects are coming up with a schematic plan. They have a general idea of what they want to do. They're trying to figure out what has to happen structurally to the building to see if it's feasible, and then we get together with the director of engineering and present her with our findings and before we take that project any further as well. Pre-con was already talked about, so I don't have to go into that until today. The handicap rent program from last year on Reed Avenue from last year, I did get a call from the contractor. They're in the process of getting the bonds together, so we'll be able to close that project out shortly. And down at Beaver Branch Park, now the building, we have the shell of the building. The contractor did the soccer fields, is going to come back and install the controls for the irrigation system and the well. And in regards to the actual bathroom, we are coordinating with PSE and B and Comcast at this point to get the electric service and cable out there for the alarm system. And on the 2011 road program, we're trying to close that out, and that's the one where we're waiting on some things for Paramount. We received notification that Paramount is currently in litigation with their subcontractor, SKA, so I'm not sure how that's going to affect us, but I would defer to the solicitor on that. But at this point, the Borough Hall still has $16,000. But at this point, the Borough still has sixteen thousand dollars that we're trying to turn over to somebody, we're just not sure who it is, so we can vote out that project. And that's all I really have it's new to report on, unless I have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. What is this?
Resolution thirteen eighty-nine, it's tabled at the latest meeting, regulating salaries of employees of the Borough Running for the Year 2013. This is what the statutory is.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hold it, favor.
That's a little... Mrs. Passio.
I pass.
You abstained.
Mrs. Callis.
No, I pass.
I pass, hold your shot.
I can pass.
Yes.
Mr. White.
No.
Mr. Ruth.
No.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Combs.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
No.
Is it talking, you give the vote?
Yes, flag.
Oh, that's a strange one. It's a resolution to give two percent.
Can I, uh, before you... Before you vote, I mean, we didn't have an opportunity to usually discuss something with what we voted on. Just to make this clear, the solicitor, land the jury list before the mayor votes, at least explain to the council what's going on.
There's a statute that talks about the requirement with regard to certain municipal employees, that if other employees of the municipality are receiving salary increments, that those statutory employees have to receive increments as well. And the concern that I have in looking at the statute is how that would be interpreted with respect to other employees who've already received increments, who are technically, who are in fact employees of the borough. And my concern, as I expressed previously, was that we may have put ourselves in violation of that statute. And that is also possible, and if that's in fact what occurs, if we're violating the statute, then we don't, the outcome could potentially be expensive to the borough, because we'd have to defend litigation number one and number two, then somebody else is gonna cover the increment, and also the date, effective date of the increment, opposed to the council deciding these two things.
And this increment only taken effects going in Jan, in June, whereas I understand the solicitor saying it could be retroactive to the time we did the other contracts for the rest of the borough employees.
This is just for these employees.
It's only for though, because we've already done the contractual.
Well, I, I, you said June, so I'm just gonna point out to you that sexual forces...
Oh, it does say January. Oh, I apologize, I thought we already made the change.
We talked about it.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
And that means, and the other ones, the bigger director or employees, how about the ones that are...
We haven't excluded them yet, though.
The chief employees?
Yeah, we can, we can look at that at a later date.
Well, why not do it all at once, if you're gonna do something?
Because I think that when the directors went back to the, I don't mean to speak for the directors, but I was under the impression that when they went and talked to them, that at this time, it made sense to do the non-contractual statutory employees and then take a little more time with the non-contractual employees. It's not unlike the borough to do retroactive or to do things at a later time. We've done it in previous years, if you recall, we did it last year.
Well, we...
We did it all at one time.
Yes, we did, yes.
So what, the statute says that we have to say yes?
Now, it doesn't say that, that. The statute says that...
You're saying that if we don't say yes, there's a possibility that we'll be aggrieved.
Yes, I understand that.
And then they're lost.
That's correct.
And then that because of the borough.
Correct. Everything possible. Yeah, it's possible, it's not...
It's possible, but it's...
I, I, I can't tell you that it's absolutely gonna happen, and that if it does happen, that we're absolutely gonna lose. I also can't tell you that I have, that we're absolutely, we're not gonna lose, or that we're gonna win, because I think it's too brave at this point. I have my own feeling about the way courts look at things, depending on who's suing whom. Is that right? Uh, was it, okay. So that, that was my concern, and I was asked to look into it earlier, and I did, and I gave that opinion to the committee.
And the committee didn't meet with Mr. Wood, and I apologize if the committee didn't do a good enough job of communicating to the other three members of the board. I did speak through, I thought I spoke to everybody, but I didn't make it clear.
Oh, yeah, and why did you speak to, yeah, I got that.
And, yeah, and you have to vote, and, but I think you're, you understand this, you can, you can...
I understand.
Yeah, so the question again, guys, is that these are, we did do it last year, we've done it in previous years, we did give raises out to all the contractual employees, and I just understand that this is two percent, which is the same that we gave Police Department, it's the same we gave our workers in the Public Works Department, it's the same that we gave the workers in the front office, and we have the planning board on tonight, the Secretary, she's getting it. I understand there's a concern about giving raises, but these were negotiations, and one of the problems with the non-contractualists is they're not represented by any union for us to sit down at the table. The office management personnel are not represented by a union representation, and neither is the supervisors of both Public Works and the Public Safety points. Now, your question is, can we look at the other people? Absolutely, this does not say, Glenn, we made that clear, that, you know, the statute doesn't say that we have to do everybody, it doesn't say, you know, we can always do, we can treat people somewhat differently.
The statute, and you know, most of these things are written by lawyers, so they're not meant for... I know that, so we don't understand. Yeah, so, and it's true, most lawyers do sometimes. So it, and this is a little weird, so you have three, we call them statutory employees, but the statute talks about them, and we have three non-statutory employees, and we'll call them all a part of the administration. So the statute says, if you, if you gave it to the non-statutory employees, you have to give it to the statutory. But it does not say that, that if you give it to the statutory employees, you have to give it to the non-statutory employees. So kind of means you don't have to do it if you don't want, you don't have to do it at the same time. Doesn't, and this is only addressing three people, it's not excluding anybody that just hasn't...
It's only addressing three people.
Now, I think it's...
It's two. It's three people, because one person holds two titles.
Well, it's... No, no, isn't it?
Oh, it's four titles.
It's four titles and three people.
Right. There's a third person, our successor.
Taxessessor.
I need to ask a question, but I don't know if it's, because it's about, like, employment and all, can I ask it, or...
You would.
Well, I was on the understanding that these people received the raise in November.
They got a, the previous council brought all of the non-contractual employees at one time last year, because we're already in our second year of our police contract, and our, I can't tell you the years ago in our different contract. And the council last year, and the mayor was the top of this, I think everyone was brought in at one time. There was a discussion, we come up with not necessarily a percentage rate, but a flat, Joyce, it was a flat one.
It was a flat half, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred, so, and the reason it was such a higher, if you look at twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred, for some of the employees, it was close to five or six percent. So you had forty thousand old employees getting the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Because they were lower scale.
They were on the lower scale.
Never go hit, go hits.
And the logic last year was that there were several years that they ended up zeros, because of the...
At least three or four years.
The contractual. So now that the borough has kind of changed a little bit with the two percent cap, last year was a catch-up period, and now moving forward, I think the idea is, is that when we're negotiating with our union represented employees, we're looking at them, they're averaging two percent, the non-contractuals, I think that that becomes like a baseline for the non-contractuals.
Forgetting the other man, the other one.
We're not forgetting them.
I'm gently, oh, I'm sorry.
But at this, at this point...
We did the whole thing, I can see it, and sorry.
I tabled last month, because I brought this, I brought this up, because under my department, it was only these four employees. I wasn't advocating at the time for the other non-contractuals. Each director went back and spoke to their department and decided at their own time that they would, they would bring it up. And if you want to at least say that, at least let the SIS know that you did speak, and it wasn't brought up at this time.
But, but which you said.
They're willing to sit down and talk. They're willing to sit down and talk.
They want to say that at the time.
But at a later time, not, not right now. They understand that this is statutory, and we are obligated to do it. And John did too, John, for sure. They understand, and I did not ever, ever say to John that he would not be eligible for a raise, that never came up.
I can understand that, but it doesn't seem, to me, I'm looking wrong, doesn't seem fair that they've all been admitted at the same time. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, the only thing I can say is, is that...
Because the higher scale is getting the money, the lower scale paid people aren't getting theirs yet.
Well, the chief is the highest, highest paid in the borough.
Well, he's not getting his yet. Look, the other ones aren't low-earlier. They're not low-earlier. Don't, don't give me that.
Because that's what makes that sound.
I thought you were down there, but they're all together.
No, he's...
That's all they want.
That's it. All I can say is, 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 is we can, I don't know what we can do at this point. It's your vote, the only, what I'm afraid, I'm gonna tell everybody in the audience, what I'm afraid of is, is that this is something that goes on in five hundred and fifty-six municipalities throughout the state. You can go talk to other, other municipalities, and you'll know exactly what goes on. Ginnan just bought this and had to retroback their clerk just this year. Other departments had the same thing. The legislature put this rule in decades ago, because politicians came in, and when they tried to get rid of non-contractual people, they lowered their, their salaries. So this statute was put in to stop that. I apologize, I brought this in thinking that was very benign, because we just finished the contract with the front office personnel. They received a two percent raise. I did not go to the Police Department, because that's not my department to go talk to, I did not go to the Public Works Department, it's not my department to talk to. I'm afraid that if we don't do this, you know, it makes it look like that we are truly people separately. You're assuming that we're not giving the chief and the captain numbers, I'm not saying that at all. All I'm saying is, we've taken care of the police contract last year, we took care of the fire contract.
Okay, that's not the chief.
But my point is, they come in at different times. We do them when they, when they expire. Should we do this at the beginning of every year in January? Probably, but you're having new members of council come in, I think it takes time for them to get used to their employees and who they're working with, before they can make these decisions.
But again, when was that twenty-five hundred dollars?
This year.
And last year's was a long time, when, during the year? I don't...
It was retroactive, just then.
I don't, I don't have a problem giving anybody a two percent raise throughout the year, I think it's, everybody deserves a two percent raise. It's just, if it was November, then why are we giving them a two percent raise now?
It was November, retroactive.
And then, to January.
It came in November, but it covers all of you. I think that's what you're trying to ask.
Now, what I, what I like to do is amend this, because the solicitor myself, and he didn't do this, and I apologize, again, I'm sorry. I was under the impression, Glenn, that we had said January, June, because we had only finished the last contract, CWA contract, last month. So the idea was we would start June.
That was the discussion that we had in committee.
That was the special committee. And so, I don't know if we...
Well, this is, it's not that, it's retroactive.
Well, this, this resolution says retroactive, did that correct?
That's incorrect.
Yes, well, it's incorrect for what...
It was one the committee had recommended, not that I didn't say.
The raises that the contractuals were retroactive till January.
It was, but I, at the time, I think the solicitor had said, because we were just finishing the one, even though it went retro, that it made sense that we could just move in June, get it done instead of the retro.
The problem is that it's already been introduced and voted on, so everybody who voted would have to agree, and the mover and the executor would have to agree to the amendment, and then after the amendment, you might decide.
Should we finish this resolution before we maybe, we wanna say what SIS, do you wanna vote on this one?
What anything you can do, then?
Well, I, I can't give you that.
No, I'm supposed to answer you.
Yeah, I, I, I can't give you that opinion, honestly.
Well, you should know how I feel, I feel everybody should do it all at one time, as a, the union did it.
Well, we can, we can have another resolution for the other non-contractual employees later on.
Well, you, you say later day, I wanna, if you say later day, I wanna know when.
Well, I think we can talk to the Director of Public Safety, Director of Public Works.
And I'll move down.
Okay. I would like to, at the end of this, at least have a discussion, if someone wants to revisit this resolution, to say if it could only start from June, and if everyone has now an opportunity to understand it, if you wanna bring it up again at the end of the meeting.
Okay, you can go on. Public comments on the jail, on the jail items. My, your... Public comment on the dead item. That's okay.
I see no one wishing to speak. Does anyone wish to speak on any other items that are coming up for the rest of the meeting? I see no one, I make a motion to close the call.
Sir. Okay, your favor.
Ah, I'm sorry. I don't mind.
Resolution thirteen ninety-six is a resolution authorizing Borough Running to enter into agreement with the DMV for our police services.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to enter an agreement with the State of New Jersey Division of Motor Vehicles.
Second.
I second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Ruth.
Yes.
And Mr. Combs.
Yes.
Resolution thirteen ninety-seven is a resolution authorizing tax exemption on Block one thirty-nine, Block four, the city of Davis, eight, four, four, three, thirty, and second.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
And Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Ruth.
Yes.
And Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Combs.
Yes.
Resolution thirteen ninety-eight is a resolution pending Resolution thirteen dash twelve, signatures for checks on municipal quarter count available by the county.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Roll call. Hold it, favor. Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the ayes have it. I'm moving the resolution being adopted.
Resolution thirteen ninety-nine is a resolution authorizing salaries of the employees of the Borough Running for the Year 2013.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Passio.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ruth.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Ruth.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Mr. Combs.
Yes.
I'm moving this resolution now be adopted.
Resolution one zero one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a release of agreement lying between Borough Running and the base management.
I have a motion.
I make a motion.
I second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly.[1717.12]
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Resolution, uh, one zero one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a release agreement lying between Borough of Renovate and East Mall.
I have a motion.
I make a motion. I second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Resolution thirteen one oh two is a resolution authorizing an interlaborative services agreement between the Borough of Renovate and the Borough of Arlington for a deputy registrar of other statistics services.
I have a motion.
I so moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I have a, I move this resolution is now adopted.
This is resolution thirteen one oh eight, one oh three, this is a resolution regarding two thousand thirteen appointments. These are all the summer appointments.
I have a motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Resolution thirteen one oh four is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Renovate super count to general operators.
I have a motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Resolution thirteen oh five is a resolution authorizing property maintenance claims on various blocks of law.
I have a motion.
I make a motion. I second.
Uh, can I have a, adopt this one?
Sure.
This one here is, uh, this is all the property maintenance, uh, they're a hundred ninety-one dollars per, for a property lot. We have a, uh, ordinance coming up that would increase the fees to two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, would it be appropriate for us to table this and, uh...
Well, your, your ordinance is coming up, the deal with the fees is prospective. I think it would be problematic to try to make it to work that we did before this.
That's right. Please.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call to us.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Uh, we have some additional resolutions to add on. Resolution thirteen dash one zero six is a resolution authorizing purchase of a police vehicle from Winter Ford under state contract.
I make a motion.
This is second packet that I sent, I gave you, I gave you the second packet.
Here. Will I run through all these now? Sorry.
Resolution was proposed to, to Kelly?
Yeah. Roll call. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Uh, resolution thirteen oh seven is a resolution regarding employment of the Borough of Renovate. This, uh, uh, issues a severance check to Donovan Fram of twelve thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-two cents.
And it's one oh seven, two. One oh seven.
It's one oh seven? It's number two seven?
I said one oh seven, two seven, I just went back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I went back.
I have a motion.
I make a motion. I second.
Right there. Your roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore, excuse me. Mr. White? Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Six eyes.
This resolution is now adopted.
Uh, resolution thirteen oh eight is a resolution regarding employment. This issues a severance check to Ralph Beeden, he can not exceed five hundred dollars.
And again, it's one oh eight. Can you leave it out to one?
I make a motion.
I second.
Roll call.
I'll second. It's the second bag. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Six eyes. Uh, resolution thirteen one oh nine is a resolution authorizing a severance check to Robert Christiansen in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I have a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Uh, resolution thirteen dash one ten is a resolution authorizing purchase of two generators in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars.
I have a motion.
I bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Resolution thirteen dash one 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 is the temporary budget.
I make a motion.
I second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
I move this resolution is now adopted.
Now we got first reading, a warning thirteen fifteen, this is the ordinance, then chapter nine five, brush gray said needs, like, the Borough of Renovate decides the two hundred and fifty dollars on to each time a property maintenance claim is created.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
That's one, first reading?
Or, yeah, excuse me, I make a motion to adopt on first reading and advertising according to law, with a public hearing to be held on the seventh day of August two thousand thirteen, a meeting beginning at seven P M.
I'll second.
You're all right.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Resolution, uh, ordinance thirteen sixteen is an ordinance amending ordinance nine, uh, zero nine zero two, and ordinance establishing fees for use of the aggregate support.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the first reading and advertising according to law with a public hearing to be held on the seventh day of August two thousand thirteen, a meeting beginning at seven P M.
I second.
Hold it, favor.
I know.
Roll call. Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins? Can I have a call of the ordinance thirteen seventeen? The ordinance establishing position of record support technician one.
I make a motion to adopt a first reading and advertising according to law, with a public hearing to be held on the seventh day of August two thousand thirteen, a meeting beginning at seven P M.
I second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
I need to break the reading.
Six eyes.
Only because there was a, a lot of discussion, a problem with the...
Okay, where you should, you want to wait till...
I got a little...
Any problem, you should go back to it.
I make a motion to, uh, pay all the, uh, monthly and, and contractual bills.
I'll second.
White? I can't tell what it's, I don't mind if you have a... Okay. So now we still have... Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Passio?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And, uh, and Mr. Collins?
Yes. Uh, before we get on, uh, the mayor just asked, uh, Richard, would you please, uh, explain to the public, uh, what's, since we just passed the amended contract with the valley from, and Velmar, for that, that means?
Roll call, that was not so important. When does it start and what date?
No problem.
Please.
Uh, the, the contract, uh, will start the first Tuesday in August. Uh, go on, that's August. August. Uh, basically, the, the changes that will take place is that the collection day will be on Tuesday and the recycling on the...
West side.
West side. Will move to Wednesday.
That's it.
Very good.
That's it.
Uh, we will be sending a, a memo out to all residents notifying them of the change and it will also highlight the, uh, the change for recycling day.
So already on the, uh, website, on the scroll counter, you can already see the change date that will...
So when's the...
Website.
When's the... It will remain on, recycling will remain on Thursday. On Thursday. Correct. Uh, the difference between the two contracts, uh, between what we're paying now and what we're going to pay is approximately forty-five hundred dollars. So that was, uh, the number that I had looked up by, by the meeting.
Forty-five hundred?
Forty-five hundred per month. So it comes out about fifty-five thousand dollars annually. But because the contract didn't start January first, I didn't want anyone to think that it's twenty thirteen.
So we'll say forty-five hundred per month.
Per month, correct.
And it also includes, uh, dumpsters that will be able to put at our renovation facility, our library for our home, which we...
Correct.
Which hopefully will save money for both the land and the...
Correct, no problem.
We needed that.
Okay.
We'll clarify. Uh, before we go to, um, to the payment bills, just because I want, you know, this council does not have to take this up now, the mayor makes a ballot point about the other, uh, the non-contractual employees, but I do want to clarify that the, the resolution sort of, sort of stated, um, that it would not be retroactive, that it would go from June first, uh, to...
Well, June first would be retroactive.
It would be retroactive for June. Um, I don't know if this board wants to take this up now, uh, once again, I, I just want to make it clear that, uh, even this evening, we just gave a raise to the land board secretary. Sign...
About three hundred dollars?
Well, if you do it by percentage wise, it's, it was about fifteen percent.
Three hundred.
I agree with you.
There's a big difference.
No, I, I agree. Uh, I still think that the directors of both public works and public safety have the right to, uh, talk to their non-contractual employees and management employees and decide what direction they're going to go. I think this board does realize, this council does realize that, that come August, we more than likely will have to fill a temporary position in that department, in the public works department. Also in August, we're going to have to fill another position in the, uh, police department.
Those we do temporarily in the public works?
Uh, we are, we have a resident, we have a notice from pension, right? We, I don't know, we don't have a resignation letter this night, but we do have...
To retire the superintendent of public works.
We have an intent to retire.
Okay. The audit, the audit, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's because we have an unofficial letter that it sends to, to council and, and that's why we're being a little cautious until we have, uh, we have our, uh...
Correct.
Pension board was notified, which notified us, but this time we're... But the director is aware that there might be, uh, changes that have to make there. Um, I just think that, uh, don't think that, that it's just because, uh, uh, we're, we're looking at different departments differently. I'm in charge of finding it. When we, when we finished the contract, I, I remember bringing this council and said, look, we, we finished the contract, we have the statutory department. I really didn't think that it would be, uh, an issue. I understand the concern. Tonight, we paid two retiring, uh, employees that worked for us. It was a contractual obligation, we had no choice but to do this. Could we have voted no and said we were not going to give them their severance, absolutely we voted no. Would we have been sued? Absolutely. We would have been sued. And I'm warning this board again, why are we not, uh, and this goes on in this municipality way too much? Uh, you know, council all the way there, we have ordinances on the book that we ignore. We have statutes that the legislature passes that are, uh, ignored. Maybe I'm using too hard of a word, ignored. But the fact of the matter is, is that read the ordinances in the Borough of Renovate. We, we, it's on the civic association because we didn't realize that we had this checkbook that was out there and that there was no internal control zones. So, uh, now I don't mean to be, but the three of you who, who voted no to this realize, four of you, yeah, please do, realize, uh, that, uh, just like the union contract, we are, we may be susceptible to some type of obligation. I think the committee and the, um, the solicitor at the time when we did this, we did say June. I don't know if, if June's correct because the clerk does make a ballot point. You talk about the twenty-five hundred dollars that was given next year. That was retroactive because it was, that they had gotten zeros for so many years that the idea...
For years, they didn't ever reach. So, I know that.
Well, I mean, it's different, it's different, it's different than retroactive.
Exactly.
Because we settled that, each of the contractors, we settled that, covered certain years. So the employees were working without contract based on the former terms and conditions of the former contract. So if you're lucky enough, which is very precarious to be, to get it done in the same year that it ended. Okay? And, but with, 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 uh, with the office workers, we got it finally done at the end of last year. Have we served you correctly? It was, uh, April this year. April this year, which was actually the third year. When this issue was brought... That was, that was the third year. They had been working two plus years without a contract.
Yes, we had...
Now we settled the contract and went, had, had by, by requirement, law had to go back to...
Yes.
Two thousand and eleven. January first, two thousand and eleven, because they were on the contract on December thirty first. So yes, it's paying, it's going backwards in time, but it's different than retroactive because they just said, okay, zero in the first year, two in the second, third year. And then they, they, you know, they have the eighteen months, everybody decided to do on the eighteen months, so we continued. These contracts all expire at the end of June two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a long
Everybody have one time.
Well, some of them, one that we're negotiating.
One, one, yeah, so
We have a meeting Monday.
Right. I will, I've remained silent on this because it includes myself, so my apologies for not giving you a voice on this. I can speak to the progress. I can say that the management, as a rule, and I had requested this of council in the past years, were not dealt with because the contracts with the units were open. When we, when we learned that there was going to be an extended delay with the final contract with C W A, management set down the finance committee and the mayor, et cetera, and basically agreed that we weren't going to wait any longer for management. So that's why that was done in November of last year. There was a requirement in January of last year through statutorys, but because we were holding off on all management, everyone was in agreement that that was the right move. I disagree a little bit. I think that all the contracts included in January first this year, again, we held off on the management side and did not bring the issue of the finance until the C N O B A was done. So that is why this issue popped up in April because it was a question of whether it was going to be on the meeting for the contract and I said absolutely not, just save it for the next agenda if it's going to be on the agenda, because I didn't want to have that special meeting because of a special meeting. But that is where the dates come from. But all the other units, January first automatically got the increase.
Yes. So before we move on, unless, I mean, I'm not here, once again. This will come up every
Every year.
Yes.
So once a year, the statute says that the non-contractuals receive a raise.
On the statutorys.
Statutory, not contractual.
If
Depending on what else is going on.
Yes. We have one hundred and thirty-nine employees.
Regardless of good or bad, I mean, we don't do evaluations and that's one thing that I find, I don't, I don't understand how we can give a raise or evaluate anyone on their merit when we don't do evaluations. So
Well, and you have, it's a very valid point. You have, as I said to the mayor earlier, you have this statute that says you should have, doesn't mean you can't do evaluations, doesn't mean you shouldn't do evaluations. What impact that has on what you're able to do based on the statutory expulsion is a whole other project. But, and you have three other employees who aren't, you aren't, I'm not picking on them, but you're not hamstrung by the statutes that respect that, but obviously with any employee, you know, periodic review and so on, it's always good employer policies. Just even to find out, even to tell them they're doing a good job. So periodic reviews is really always good.
And with the contractual employees, if you think about it, we negotiate a three or four or five year contract, nowhere in the contract does it say that we're, that the, that the employee is subject to a review to get that raise. All the employees that are covered under all the contracts of the Bureau of Running, there is no component in there that says that they must accomplish something to get that raise. So all of, every single department, all those employees are treated equally and the same regardless of their attendance, their productivity, and anything else. Now, this, this council can, through its rules and regulations, through its policies, start to implement some type of accountability. It won't impact their raises, but at least it might impact, you know, their productivity and how they're doing their jobs and promotions and things like that. But when we're negotiating raises, there has never been a component that says how they do it. And, and I think they, you know, we're, to, once again, I think that the directors, the committee got together, they're looking at their, their department saying that that's an opportunity for them to start saying, let's look at your, your attendance, let's look at your productivity, before they come to the mayor and council and say, we're going to give you a raise based on something, not based on the fact that, well, everybody else got raises, and I know that's responding to everybody, well, everybody else got raises, why aren't we giving these guys a raise? And, or why aren't we giving our raise if we're not compelled by a contract to get the raise? So I just, once again, I caution, before we leave, I mean, we're going to go to better welfare, I have one thing positive to bring up, and, and, before we move on, does anyone, I will not make another motion to bring up this resolution. Does anyone else want to bring up this resolution?
What is our, what are our choices?
Well, I think that the, this listener, I think that June could be a change on here, but once again, we might run into a problem as the safety of the district falls down, all the contract went back, all the contracts went back to January. So once again, we could be, through the statute, say that, well, we're not treating them the same as everybody else because we did, even C W A that we just settled, they all received in their fridge their last check, they were given a bump to match what they should have gotten, starting their first paycheck and checking. So I have to say that the ordinance, that the resolution that's in here now is correct, that should be correct. But I, I need to call you guys, Warren, and give you more stuff. Once again, this is, we saw how much we got done, we did a lot of things on top of having a seventy-dollar budget that went across this and doing. Paid one hundred and thirty-nine employees every week. Three retirements.
Two weeks.
Twenty-two weeks.
Excuse me.
That's right. Do it, do it right. You saved a lot of money by going every two weeks. Anyone?
Mr. President. I've been on council six months. We have accomplished a great deal in the six months since we've been on council. I voted to approve this because I feel that at some point in time, we will want to address this with our non-contractual administrators. However, I don't feel it's appropriate to do it at the same time with the statutory non-contractual. Because I have discussed this with people in my department that would be affected and they understand what's happening tonight and they agree that they will meet with me at a later time to discuss their raises appropriately. We've also discussed evaluations and reviews and they seem to be in agreement with that. And I'm talking the Police Department. The Fire Department is contractual. They are in negotiation, I believe, they are still in negotiation.
That's part of you.
Yeah.
I can't, we can't deal with that, they're contractual.
Well, I'm not sure if you mind this, but
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you my point of view of why I voted for this, because it is statutory and we open ourselves to litigation if we don't. And I feel that at this point in time, we don't need any more problems than we have. We've been addressing problems since day one, you will know that. Let's get this over with, let's move on, let's meet with our people and get this, so that there's no misunderstanding with the department heads. We will meet with them and there will be no misunderstanding and they will know what our procedures will be and how we will go about getting their raises. But right now, let's get over, let's get over this hole.
I haven't met with everybody in my department. I did speak to John, John brought it up when this was, when this first came up, John addressed it to me. I said, it's not out of question that you will get a raise. My question to John was flat out, and I have an email to prove it, was tell me why you should get a raise. And honestly, I never got a response from John to tell me why he should get a raise, other than the fact that he's contractual. That doesn't mean I'm not going to put it on the table to reject, or non-contractual, it's not, it's not something that I'm not going to address with them, I want to address it with all the guys. They've done a good job for me so far, I would never snub them at this point, never.
I know.
I would never do that. But I do feel in grades with Eleanor that this has been an ongoing issue, that things get pushed off and not addressed, and I say that we need to address this and just move on and move past it, because it is going to open us up to a problem. It's going to create a problem. There's no denying that.
I, I don't think there was enough discussion on this particular vote for a proper, for my proper decision, you know, to say yes, so that's why I said no.
Patty, do you have any?
No, I said, I said no. Take my questions.
Do I have enough information to discuss it about?
Because either, either, well, obviously, the three of you, once you've got it, either one of the three of you think that it's something that we should put on the voting again, want to table it again?
No, we're going to vote on it.
It doesn't exist, so it will be a new, a new motion to kind of give it a different number and then read it again if we wanted to. And will you want to take?
Yeah, I think, next week.
We, thank you, we bring out, as I said, another, we can, that's the way you want.
I, I think you could, you could, you could do it amended, I don't think you could vote against it.
Okay, amend it. How would you amend it?
A new resolution?
Well, and I
It's got to be word, so people understand what everything needs in that.
We at least agree that if we, if we amend it and bring it up, we'll do it all right now, is there just a
No, I'm not feeling it.
There wasn't enough information, I mean, I don't have enough information.
What was the information that you were just given? What, what's the information that you understand? That you understand that we have to say yes?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
That we have to say yes, that our hands are tied and we have to say it.
Yes.
That's part of the contract.
That's part of the contract.
So I'm, this is the first talking down.
Well, we brought it up last month and it wasn't clear.
Eleanor, I believe Eleanor had a problem with the last one.
Did you read the statute? I read the statute, it was really vague to me.
Okay, it wasn't clear.
It was addressed at a long point and you two had said it was a day, it was a day.
And that's the, that's the problem, the vague is generally what creates a problem. So I guess you got the information.
Well, we
Since I don't give out all the important pieces, potential litigants will sit down here.
Yes. It makes a little difference. It does make a little difference.
It's a little different. No, I say we just drop it, move on.
Move on. Well, it would be resolution thirteen one oh.
Hey, hold on.
I have one too. Thirteen one eleven. I'm making a motion.
One twelve.
One twelve.
Thirteen one twelve.
I'm making a motion for resolution thirteen one twelve. Would be a resolution regulating salaries of employees in Bureau of Running County, Kansas City, Jersey for the year two thousand and thirteen. Amendment would be the salaries as specified in section one, year end shall be effective as of January first, two thousand and thirteen, and shall continue in effect until amended, until, until January, what month is it, January first?
December.
December thirty? And effective, amended the resolution until December thirty first, two thousand and thirteen. So that's my motion.
What's the number?
Thirteen one
I will second.
Is there any other discussion? Or about this new resolution?
Obviously, you're trying to push it, push it through even like the answer you got in the first one, so you're trying to push it through.
And if you're
It's fine.
If you'd like to wait for the grievances to come in, I understand.
I'll see, I'll see why you have to push it through, I'll see why you can't do it right, explain to everybody, I'll protect the three people that are not
Well, in the better form of government, we can get together with the three people. So what happened is the solicitor came in, spoke to the committee, which was
Personnel.
It was Personnel Committee, which included the two departments that had Public Safety and Public
But nobody came out to say anything to anybody else when you're much in three
There wasn't, there was brief discussion, it was discussion
Not with me.
Mayor, you're only entitled to that, and you're right.
I should have done something.
You should have.
You're damn right.
You should have. It was on there, you had every right to ask it. It was on, it was on the agenda.
You're kept, you should keep from me having stuff, how am I supposed to know? And I know I said damn, it's an agenda, it's an agenda. I don't dare.
Uh, we have a, a motion on the floor, it's second. Do you want to do roll call? Roll call?
Mrs. Calvert.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Passio.
No.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. White.
No.
Mr. Capas.
Yes.
Four eyes and two nose.
Thank you.
You just saved the Bureau of Taxpayers.
A lot of money. Sure, we could have told them that way, I guess we did.
Right? Ready, set, go.
This is the Good and Welfare portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Name Smith, eight seven six Orchard. You were discussing a lot of employees here tonight, raises, potential raises. Is that a violation of the Rice Act? I mean, you guys are naming people by name, saying they're putting retirement papers in. I mean, you know, they're not in that room, they're not in the room. So you can just basically, I'm asking you, I mean You're asking me, you're asking me my legal opinion? Yes. The council hasn't done anything illegal. Okay, you're allowed to discuss. But their, a Rice notice has certain parameters and certain things you can and cannot talk about, and none of that has been violated by the discussions this evening. So you're, you can, without employees being in the room, here you can just discuss whether they asked for a raise, didn't ask for a raise, how you want to evaluate their performance.
When I was asked by the mayor question, I directed that question right back to the mayor, I gave the
The question's been answered, you haven't violated any provisions that would have required you to give a Rice notice to any employee. It's not for all discussions about employees, it's for, it's for discussions that are particular. You can, you can, you understand Rice's, and it has a good line. Rice doesn't say, you can never have a contractor mention an employee's name, you'd pledge employees' names all the time. Nobody's performance was discussed, nobody, anything was discussed. And that, if it was, that would be a problem. Well, their performance was Well, you're How you want to evaluate their performance, correct? How you, how you And by name, who they were. I've answered your question, Sarah. You can disagree with me and I respect your right to do so, I'm not going to change my opinion, I believe I'm legally correct. No one's, no one's performance was discussed. And the methodology of evaluating performance can be discussed at any time, because that's not, that's a process, it's not the conclusionary aspect of it. It would be logical for them to discuss, we're, I didn't do that. We're going to set up a methodology of evaluation that will include these parameters for, for these employees, that would be appropriate for them to discuss, even if it was for one employee, because you have some instances where something could only be applicable to one employee because you have departments, you have different departments that have different responsibilities, and how you might evaluate that person might be different than, than an apartment head and another department. You see what I'm getting at here? Because these people are going to see this on this guy's No, I'm happy they're going to see And they're going to, they're going to know that you're discussing then interpotential evaluation, or how you want to give them raises. I'm not saying the same thing over and over, I understand your opinion, I just, I don't agree with you, I don't think the council violated. I commend you, Pat, for sticking to your guns.
Twenty-one twelve, second, when I have no, I'm going to thank council and whoever sends Keith night out, he was out the day after the next meeting to address the house at the corner, it has looked better since, if any of you ride by there. Public Works, huge help, I think those recyclable cans. I would just like to introduce all of you to the R I new vice president after a few resignations and switching of people. And for those of you that don't know, Ed Walsh is the new vice president, and he actually put the cans out to the curb himself and they were picked up like the next morning. So I appreciate all of you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Patty, this is, I don't know if you did this, but this is fabulous, Sharon, it really is. I was wondering if I didn't, if I weren't called for a sponsor, and just being thanked in the back is huge, so I appreciate that. Did you need anything?
I'm just going to say that the, the R I is on the bill list tonight.
Yeah, so how's that working out?
It's, it's up, it's approved this evening.
So can I take it off tomorrow? I've got a seven hundred dollar bill I have to pay. Can I take it off tomorrow?
They won't bring it tomorrow, but we'll try and get it up again.
All right. All right, I'll be here Friday.
See you now.
Come on, Dad.
Can I have a motion, I close the Good and Welfare portion of the
I think those close.
They do.
I think they should close the Good and Welfare portion of the
Another second?
I'll second.
There's a favor.